Why didn't you give him an offer of less much? Because he would physically drop out.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here. Stand for a moment, a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And then, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ike and Monique and Angel and whoever else you've got, come on up. We have a proclamation that reads, whereas the Emancipation Proclamation was issued on January 1st, 1863, with the intent of pursuing the freedom of many of the men, women, and children of African descent victimized by the institution of slavery, and whereas the Great Civil War came to an end on April 1865, while slaves remained in capacity in various parts of the nation, Galveston, Texas, being the last great bastion of slavery. Whereas General Gordon Granger led Union troops to Galveston, Texas, and read the General Order Number Three, which ended slavery in its last stronghold on June 19th, 1865, on June 19th became known as Juneteenth by the former slaves and is annually celebrated on an international basis. Whereas the Iowa Juneteenth Service was founded by the Connect Foundation to educate all Iowans about the purpose of Juneteenth and the focus on economic, political, and social development of African Americans. Now, therefore, I robbery, Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth Day in Sioux City, and urge all of our citizens to reflect upon the significant role that African Americans have played in shaping the history of the state of Iowa and the United States of America.
On behalf of the Sioux City Chapter of the NAACP and citizens of Sioux City, we truly appreciate this proclamation. We are very thankful and just happy to live in a place that takes diversity and inclusivity and all of those things, our history, into effect. And so, we appreciate this. We appreciate the City Council recognizing Juneteenth as it is a federal holiday, and we aren't ready this year, but we are feverishly working to put a big citywide celebration together for 2025. So, again, thank you so much, and we really appreciate this.
Good for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lo.
We have interviews for the Airport Board of Trustees. Skip Purley, Skip, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to continue to serve.
Skip Purley, 524 Pellotiers, Sioux City. I guess just to continue the work at the Airport Board, it's passionate to me for a whole lot of reasons. One, my interest in flying. Two, flying commercially. Three, I have an airplane there. So, it crosses a lot of interest marks for me, and I'd like to continue.
And you're gonna need something to do here.
And I'm...
I was gonna say, your schedule opened up.
I'm hoping the pay increases a little bit. Need a little bit of supplemental income.
You'll get a raise when we all get one.
Skip, I do have a question for you. Paul Baker applied, and I don't know if you...
Don't know him.
Okay, well, he had some ideas, gave some reasons why he wanted to be on the board, and one of them was, number one, he believes the 185th is so critical, so important to our community, and obviously, we all agree with that. And then, he also wants to promote some air freight, perhaps more of a niche market to the carriers that are smaller than our FedEx, you know, et cetera, or maybe some specialized freight carriers, and also some extra marketing on the travel, commercial travel for, you know, our airport. Would you agree with that, that we could perhaps lure or market to that?
So, personally regarding the 185th, I really don't think there's anything more important to the Siouxland Airport than the 185th.
Right.
And it's not what gets the citizens excited because it's, but it's, it is a huge, huge thing for our community that is dependent upon that airport and dependent upon the air traffic control tower staying in place, and so that's absolutely a huge thing. So, I agree with that. I think the concept of a freight hub would be great. I'd be list, I'd be willing to listen to any ideas that somebody has about how to make that happen. Off the top of my head, I, I think it's a little bit challenging, giving, given the freight that we typically have in Siouxland, we're not a, we're not an area that has a ton of, I'm gonna call it, light freight. We have a lot of heavy industrial, food product, and so forth, that's, that's expensive to air freight. So, some challenges, but that doesn't mean there isn't opportunities. I'm just not aware of them off the top of my head. And finally, air, you know, the commercial air travel is always, you know, top of mind because that's what everybody talks about all the time, and we're constantly trying to improve that, but it's just full of challenges. And me personally, I, I think we're gonna continue to fight that battle, but keeping what we currently have is, is a fight right now, and we're gonna work on that.
I love flying out of Sioux City. It's so nice to...
It's super handy, and for me personally, I've been canceled more often out of Omaha and Sioux Falls than I have out of Sioux City, but it's still a challenge.
Sure, with all the work you've done for Amazon, you and Beesel probably on a regular basis, maybe...
Yeah, he usually sends the jet to come with him.
Maybe you could get him to build a place here that we could then need air freight. That would be a huge plus if you could get that done, number one. Number two, I talked to Mike about this last week, you're not gonna get a lot of that stuff if you don't have a trade, free trade zone, and we started that process 30 years ago, and it never really went anywhere, and I think it might be worth at least looking into again to see if there is a way that we could do that, because it does, with that, it does bring some freight, for sure. So, I, I hope the Airport Board will consider at least looking into that and seeing what, what it would take, so...
We'll talk about that Thursday morning.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, Skip, very much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Julie Enixson, Events and Facility Tourism Board.
Well, good afternoon. Julie Enixson, Sioux City resident and the president of Rosecrans Jackson Centers, and I'm here about being on the Tourism and Advisory Board for a next, another term. I just finished my first term, enjoyed it, loved seeing all the improvements that we've done for entertainment and tourism around Sioux City, and love being a part of that and giving feedback, and would like to continue that again for the next term.
Good. Appreciate it. Good.
I always appreciate serving with you and listening to your input, and whether you're at events or what you've heard at events, so appreciate your willingness. I know you're busy as well, so, thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks for making the reapplication.
Absolutely.
Two and a half years, it went like that, didn't it?
Just like that, it went very quickly. I couldn't believe my term was up, so, but I've really enjoyed it.
Well, thank you.
All right. All right, thanks, guys.
Today, the Consent Agenda is Items 3 through 16D. You can consider those items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote's requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read that agenda item. If you want to speak on an item, not on the, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second. Three is reading of the June 7th, 10th, and 11th City Council Minutes. Four is a motion, motion appointing Nissan Braun to the Senior Advisory Committee. Five is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjusted Actions of May 28th. Six is a resolution approving the submission of the Iowa Economic Development Authority High Quality Jobs Application for Cargill. I'd just say, a citizen brought to our attention a concern about the process of how that works. That process hasn't changed. I know I've visited that plant. It hasn't changed in the last 25 years. Obviously, what they, how they treat that is highly explosive. Our fire department knows all about it. Our, they are very safety conscious. I've visited the plant quite a while ago, and you can't even walk in that part of the plant with a cellphone or your keys or anything that would be any electronic device. They control who goes in and who goes out. It's, it's not a process that, that doesn't have risk, but I live by the terminal fuels up there in Leeds, and they say that if that got on fire, it'd be six blocks around, there would be problems, and unfortunately, the industries grow, have grown in the area of the city that are populated. Cargill's been a good corporate citizen. Cargill has these plants in other industrial, or other more urban areas, and they are about, if you've been to the plant, they're about as safety conscious as any company that we will find, so... You're saying your experience, that you've seen over the years that precautionary measures have been taken, and, and they're updated, and they're, the fire department's well aware of what we have there in place and the facility that's run. The fire department is well aware of the risk, and if they, if there was a huge concern on their part, I would think that they would probably voice those concerns. The one thing about it is when they can move more cars out of there, there will actually probably be less storage on site as well, which'll, which lowers some of that risk, so...
That was my thought, because it seemed like most of what they're looking for funding is efficiency, and that, that seems like that would probably be to their benefit.
Seven is a resolution scheduling a hearing of $1,500 penalty or 30-day suspension of the cigarette permission, permit issued to Sky High Smoke Shop and Vape at 1901 Hamilton Boulevard for violation of the cigarette laws. Actions relating to grants. A is a resolution, resolution accepting a transit, joint participation agreement, and accounting contract with the IDOT for grant to purchase a bus. B is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to accept JAG funds from the Office of Drug Control Policy for Flock Safety License Plate Reader Camera System.
We have Officer Bertrand here, just wants to say a little something about the Flock cameras.
Good afternoon, Ryan Bertrand, Captain, Sioux City PD. So, I just wanted to have a couple comments about the grant and answer any questions if anybody have anything. The grant application was made, we were before you for the grant application, permission applied for the grant, the grant's been awarded. It'll be a one-year grant, $85,000, starting July of this year, going to next year. Three agencies are partnering in this initiative, which will be Sioux City PD, Woodbury County Sheriff's Office, and the Tri-State Drug Task Force, or the DEA Task Force. So, the three agencies are working together on that, and we are working to identify some good locations for some of these LPR systems, and we are hoping that if given the green light, we look to be 120 days would be our timeframe to be up, up and operational. So, just a little bit, last time, I think I was before you, I talked about some of the successes we've had locally. Since then, that has even changed. We've caught a serial sex offender registry violator who was using rental cars to move around and avoid detection. He was apprehended and charged with the Flock deal. We've had a bank robbery that was successfully, the suspect was caught, that was prosecuted. We've also had a fraud case that was a felony-level fraud that impacted some of our local citizens, and there was a homicide out in Dakota Dunes. Flock cameras from South Sioux were instrumental in solving that case, and two, two city homicides that happened here were solved with...
From the South Sioux camera?
Using the South Sioux cameras.
Right, and now, just to clarify for citizens, cameras aren't taking pictures of you inside your car, things like that?
Yeah, the cameras, the cameras are very objective in what they cover. They don't, they don't, it's not facial recognition.
Right.
It isn't ticket writing at all.
Right.
The cameras are aimed at the back of vehicles, they're looking at nothing more specific than a publicly visible license plate and a vehicle make and model in color.
Right, LPR is license plate reader recognition? Okay, I just wanna...
So, proactively, what it means for us is, we can do such things as Amber Alerts. If we know there's a missing child that's been abducted in a parental abduction, that, that license plate could be entered in the system, and if that vehicle is encountered by one of the cameras, an alert can be generated to law enforcement. We can also do such things as missing persons. If we're looking for, we know the plate of a violent murderer or suspect, we're looking for someone in a homicide, we could use that.
It could be somebody from California making their way to New York, and they come through here, and you have the numbers.
The really cool thing about it is, we've got over 4,000 agencies in the United States that have the Flock system. 13 agencies in Sioux City, not, or in Iowa, not counting Sioux City, have the system. Two include Council Bluffs, our partner to the south, Omaha, and of course, as we all know, South Sioux. So, when we have the system and they have the system, we can leverage and share with one another. We are allowed to do that in the system, so our cameras become their cameras if we so choose to share with them, and vice versa. If they choose to share their cameras with us, then that extends our range. So, if we're looking for a Sioux City homicide suspect, me, perhaps Council Bluffs locates that vehicle down at Council Bluffs.
Captain? That all sounds wonderful, real big brother, but my concern, concern is not gonna go away. We gotta make sure we use them in the manner that we say we do, but you say that you solved two murders with these. Did you know who the people were and then look for the license plate to know where they were at? That, I mean, that's the confusing part for citizens. Are you just looking at every license plate? Are you, are you having to punch something in to look specifically for something?
Yeah, I'll give you a perfect example, Mayor. We had a shooting that occurred on the west side. The vehicle that we could see from grainy, poor video, surveillance video at the location where the shooting occurred, we were able to narrow it down to like a dark-colored SUV, likely a Jeep-type vehicle. So, running that information, we're able to do a search, and we can do like a make search, so we were able to do a like vehicle. We knew that the suspect vehicle had a window shot out, and we were able to see that vehicle 10 minutes after the Sioux City shooting, going over into South Sioux with the, with the damaged, uniquely damaged window, and we were able to get the, obviously, the license plate at that point, and from that, we're able to track down the suspect. We're currently seeking federal charges on that suspect.
So, you're looking for every car. You're, you're, if you know the person's deal, you punch the license in and it'll, it'll, but that doesn't sound like what happened here. You, you saw a car with a shot window.
Yeah, matching the suspect vehicle that we had. So, obviously, in this case, it was a dark-colored SUV, and moments later, that vehicle matched. And in, the interesting part of that story is, the vehicle had the window repaired within two or three days, and so what ended up happening was, if you were looking, if the only thing that you had to identify that suspect vehicle were the broken window, that evidence is gone because they fixed it and they've changed it, but because we're able to capture it at the time...
How, how are you punching in that you're looking for a dusk-colored SUV? How?
Able to do a make and model search, so you could do a black truck, for example, or black Ford, if you knew, if you had specific information, you knew you were looking for a Ford.
And then, Captain, the way that I understand it, I guess, maybe try to clarify for the mayor, is thinking that you type that in, right? We're looking for a black pickup truck. The cameras are on, it's not gathering data necessarily, but anytime it matches that make, if it says, okay, a black truck drove by, that's when it would snap, and a photo or whatever, and be able to send to that database.
Yeah, correct. So, just because you pushed in black, black truck, for example, you wouldn't rule anybody in or out right off of that automatically. You're gonna get, you might get dozens of black trucks, and, you know, of that issue, you're, you're just abling, you're able to narrow down your investigative leads. It just saves you time, it gives you an opportunity. In this case, we've got a basket of no fish before we started, and then with this, we've got a, we have, we still have to do investigative work, you still have to do some work, but instead of looking for a thousand black trucks in Sioux City, you might mineral the pool down to, to a dozen, and it just saves a lot of officer time. And in some of these cases, if you've all seen the, the crime show, the first 48, you realize that on a murder or something like that, getting on top of a lead within the first 48 hours is critical. So, in this case, it was able to bring these cases to conclusion for us, otherwise, they still could be unsolved. So, what we're getting to ultimately is, you know, beyond the stories, which are really cool, you know, the statistics are, the crime's up, violent crimes up nationwide, motor vehicle thefts are up, violent crime is up nationwide, police recruiting and retention is, is becoming harder and harder, so we're trying to leverage technology to help us be more efficient, be a little better stewards of the citizens' money, but also to be more productive and try to get done with less manpower.
And also, one other, one other thing that I didn't hear you mention, but I've heard you say it before, is you have to enter, like, your credentials, you have to enter a case number, and that search is tied to you.
Correct.
Right, so you can't just search for, hey, you know, I wonder what the mayor's up to, and type in his make and model, find out where he is, right?
That's a fantastic point, great question. Yeah, there's certainly, within the system, there are a lot of controls built in because it's...
Been in the room to make sure all this stuff?
Because, because of, because of the way the system is designed, because the way the systems are designed, these guidelines are real easy to implement. We can assign against individual people, we can, we have very, we have a lot of controls on permissions and what they can and can't do. Each query is logged and tracked, so if someone is trying to use it for indiscriminate use or something inappropriate, and that ever came to light, that there would be a, a record and trail of absolutely everything that happens in the system, so we would be able to follow up on that, no problem.
Captain Bertrand, what, what piqued my interest when you spoke before and as you're speaking today, what piqued my interest was the, the interconnections with all of the agencies across the country, and therefore, you know, I, I support that because it's just, it's just amazing how they tie that in so well. And you said thousands?
4,000 agencies.
4,000 agencies that will...
And you're, the other thing which is really exciting, in town, there's a couple private businesses I'm aware of that have on there, just apart from anything, are able to do this as well, just for their own business protection. So, I, you know, I think about, you know, of course, the, the city government wants to be there for everybody and serve everybody's needs, but it's pretty interesting that a private entity could say, hey, we'd like to also invest in our own security, this is something that they could obtain as a private business, and they could use this to supplement their loss prevention activities, for example.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
She is a resolution approving a master services agreement with Flock Group for a camera safety system. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with South Sioux City. B is for transportation services with Sergeant Bluff. C is a resolution approving a contract with C. Paulson Contracting for the Lee Fairix Park Tennis Court Retaining Wall Project. D is a resolution approving a contract with SciCon for the Discovery Parking Rant Air Project. E is a resolution approving a contract to Nelson Commercial Construction for the Lions Park Improvement Project. F is a resolution approving development minimum assessment agreements with SC Developers.
I just had a comment on that. I don't need staff to necessarily come up, but I, I'm excited. I think this is another building that needs renovation, that needs attention, and shows great potential to be able to be renovated, both having the commercial side, the retail on the main floor, as well as the opportunity for, whether they're condo-style, condoed-out or apartment dwellings, market rate up above. I think that, I'm glad to see more and more of these buildings are being rehabilitated rather than torn down, and I think they have a lot of great potential. The one thing I, I'm going to regularly have concern with, and I think I voiced this to staff before, and, and just don't know how we ever get away from that, or when the point is that we do get away from this, is the 100% tax abatement for 10 years in development agreements. I think at some point, you know, demand is up and people are interested in doing these things, and I don't know if that's necessary to be able to get a lot of these projects off the ground, and perhaps it is, but I just say, yeah, I'd be curious if, if ED team meeting, if you guys talk about that at any point and just have some...
Look at the memo this week, has recommendations that were made, it was in the ED memo this week, I think, I know it was, it was in something this week, of what the, Dan wasn't there, but what I thought was reasonable, and it's 75% for 10 years. May come on, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I saw it in the memo that you put out this week.
Hey, Buildings Economic Development Manager, we did not discuss this project at ED team this month, we discussed it prior.
No, no, he's asking what we're doing now that we met on last week, what, what the new formula, we went over the different projects.
There were a couple housing projects that we talked about doing, we talked about a couple different things, either 10 years, 75%, or 10 years, 50%.
50, it's 50 or 55% were capped out on that one project at like $9,395.
But we've always looked at every project individually, downtown may be a little different than...
Well, but I agree with Alex. That's what I tried to tell you guys, it's time to not look at them individually. Downtown could be different, I agree with that, but on the rest of these...
Sure.
Need to have a policy. Get what you sent out, all, they're okay with it.
And those were all just residential, they didn't have mixed use with the projects?
Right, but get, get what, what we sent out for the residential ones, so they have an idea.
And I can follow up with you and look at the memo, yeah, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just was reading through, and I know you guys have had conversations, and I know I would want to see these buildings developed. I mean, I understand that we're, we have to work with developers, and if you want these projects to fly, we gotta make a cash flow on both sides, and I think that's important, but I think it's also important that we start capitalizing on some of the, the growth and expansion that we have been experiencing, so, thank you.
Renee? I just want to be clear, because I don't want to mislead anyone when we say 100% rebate on taxes, that's on the new values, new assessed value part. Whatever the current assessed value is, is still in place, and taxes, and, and real estate taxes are still paid on that amount, so it'd be the new value. So, in some respects, you can argue it's a win-win situation for both parties.
Right, it's all new. Thanks, Dan.
She is a resolution approving an administrative agreement with the Iowa Municipalities Workman's Comp Association for the Continued Administration of Chapter 411 Medical Only Claims for Sioux City Firefighters. Ten are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution approving the Personnel Manual and Salary Schedule for Police Supervisor Employees. B is a motion accepting the Annual Evaluation of the Art Center Director. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to KP Construction for the Whispering Creek Drive and Castle Gates Drive Intersection Repaving Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to CW Suter and Son for the Renewable Fuels Heat Pump Replacement Project. I need to abstain on that item. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Combined Building Specialties for the Lewis and Clark Parking Seating Replacement, Park Seating Replacement Project. D is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. E is a resolution approving fund transfers for May. F is a motion approving the list of all claims, total expenses, and receipts for May. Twelve are actions relating to property. A is a resolution authorizing proposals for the lease of land in the Combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of city neighborhood services and scheduling a hear. B is a resolution proposing to sell east 15 feet of the Vacated Castleman Street adjacent to 424 Castleman Street, the petitioner is Sisal Properties. C is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the Combined Central Sioux City Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Chick-fil-A and scheduling a hearing. Thirteen are actions relating to sky sidewalk assessments. A is a preliminary resolution for the construction of public improvements. B is a resolution fixing values of lots for the sidewalk assessment program. C is a resolution adopting the preliminary plat and schedule estimate of cost proposed plans and specs for the sidewalk assessment program. And D is a proposed resolution of necessity for the sidewalk assessment program. Gordon, is the one on Indian Hills by Fairway not on here? I'm so tired of hearing that guy's gonna develop that property, if he's gonna develop, all's I've ever seen on that property is three bales of hay, that's the development.
Gordon Ferris.
And I almost hit a guy in a wheelchair this week, and a husband and wife are having to walk this way down the street in a lot of traffic.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer, which property is this one again?
It's the ground between the, the Fairway and the Kidney Dialysis Center.
On Indian Hills?
Yeah.
No, this one, that is not on there, but we can look into it, and I can, after this, after this one goes through, then we'll add that to it.
Yeah, we have talked about that one in the past.
Many times.
That there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of businesses.
I just, this weekend, when I read that, and then I drive that to... I just, this weekend, when I read that, and then I drive that twice this week, and this guy and his wife-
Have it for sale, and we, yeah, push-
And they keep saying they're gonna develop, and nothing ever happens, but, so, he gets away with not putting sidewalks in, time and time again, be, anyway, I hope, I hope we can figure that out. Fourteen's-
And Mayor, to be clear, when you almost hit me, I saw you coming across multiple lanes of traffic.
You know, you know what-
Don't act like that was a mistake.
It's a gentleman that lives in Vicarage, and a lot of time, he just sits-
I saw you.
Out there by Fairway for something to do, and it, and it, this is his, get away from there, and then we make it unsafe for him to, to leave, it's just unfortunate. Fourteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. Fifteen's application for beer and liquor licensing. Sixteen's boards and commission and committee meetings, anyone to be heard on any of those items.
Here, I'm gonna abstain on fifteen, A, one, C, and, and B, two, C, both Hard Rock matters, conflict of interest, thank you.
Passes five, zero, seventeen, the hearing ordinance rezoning 5901 Stone Avenue, the petitioner's Clayton Creek Construction, the P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'm open to hearing, public hearing's now open. Andrew, was, what was the vote? Andrew?
I believe the vote was five, zero.
Yeah, it was, but, you're okay, I just, no, you're good.
You want him to?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing's now open.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
707 Lake Shore. So I am part of Clayton Creek Construction on that last item, and we did request, and it has been approved, however, I had requested that we make that a non-conforming change. The development of Clayton Creek has been non-conforming from day one, if you recall, our streets are not wide enough, we've got a whole bunch of different issues, but we've been able to develop it, and took a piece of property that was pretty much useless for the city, and we've developed it into the 12 lots, and we've already have quite a few homes there, and more under construction. My request on this property, to take it to NC3, was to allow for the house to become a duplex. However, after going through the planning and zoning process, I understand that the NC3 requirement would not allow for outbuildings, if it was made into a duplex. And there are quite a few outbuildings on this property. My intention wasn't to tear any of those buildings down, my intention was to improve them from what they currently are, but I was going to use the revenue generated from the duplex to do the improvements to the buildings.
What are the buildings, sir?
They are steel, steel or metal buildings, it's just the volume of buildings doesn't conform to NC3.
So kind of like little machine shed type?
Uh, yeah, they're pretty good size, though.
Oh.
They are good size.
Okay.
So I guess I'm requesting of council to approve the change, as planning and zoning said, however, to amend, to allow for the non-conformity.
Do that? Isn't that a board of adjustment? Not a board of adjustment would have to do a non-conforming?
Wait till planning, yes, you can do, leave it non-conforming as it is today. Currently, it's NC1, it, there's about 6,000 square foot of outbuilding there currently, of that, the, there's, the, the limit for the NC1 is 10%, the current site is about 10, 15% coverage, so it's already non-conforming, so it would essentially remain that non-conforming status going to NC3.
I'm not sure I followed.
So in NC1, there's a 10% lot coverage, which it already, the lot currently exceeds by about 5%, so it's about 15% lot coverage, right?
So it's in violation, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's a non-conformity. If it goes to NC3, then it goes to more of like our minor modification, if, if they were to build on to it, which we probably wouldn't allow in this case, because it would be exceeding the square footage of the house, and so, the petitioner is requesting to, to leave it essentially in a non-conforming.
And that doesn't have to go to board of adjustment?
No.
Yeah, we, we understood what he was trying to do, our, our struggle was approving a non-conforming lot, right off the bat, we don't want to naturally do anything like that. So go, you know, basically, he was, by going to NC3, he was gaining the ability to make it a duplex and do some modifications to the house. We said if you, if you do that, you're gonna have to bring it into conforming with NC3 naturally, with a bunch of, and they're pretty nice, outbuildings, he, you know, he would have a non-conforming lot again unless he demoed those, kind of in a tough spot, really. The question I had too, was I did notice a number of the neighbors down in this area had voiced their concern and frustrations with the notion of having them be rentals, that a lot of them are owner occupied out there, or purchased their home with, with that notion that that would kind of remain intact out there in that neighborhood. And so I was just curious, I looked over the memo or the RCA, and just didn't see necessarily whether these were going to be, obviously duplex can be owner occupied, I didn't know if you were planning on renting them, or if you would be selling them.
Well, I think I have to rent them, because I can't sell the units without subdividing the lot, I believe. And I don't, I don't allow, NC3 wouldn't allow for that unless I'm misunderstanding that.
Oh, and you probably are well-versed in some of that than I am, and so, that was just my thought, was I just wondered about, because I was thinking like townhouses, right? I mean, if there was a way, and, I didn't know what would be possible, but I know that that's what your neighbors were most frustrated with, and if I went to all the trouble to live out in that area and wanted a real nice place, and, you know what I mean, I just wanting to fit in with the neighborhood, I just wanted to make sure I was at least addressing some of those citizen concerns.
And I think a lot of the feedback was, the buildings definitely do need to be cleaned up from their current state, based on the new homes that are being built, and we own the adjacent property, which is NC3, and plan to build a duplex there as well. And that was, one of our main goals, was to make sure that the property looks better than it does today, was the goal. The revenue generator for me, though, was the-
Duplex.
Turning it into a duplex, and, quite frankly, it's, it's gonna get rented either way, whether it's a house or a duplex.
So in the notion, I mean, I guess, he's right, as far as, you know, you'd have to split the lot if you were gonna sell each side of the duplex, is that the-
I'd defer to staff.
Normally, we, we split the lot if, if they're gonna do like a townhouse situation, I know they do a horizontal in some of the downtown areas, but I don't think that would apply out here, you could do that, which is kind of what Jay's wanting to do.
Oh, because it's an over-under, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not side by side.
Yeah, be over-under.
Are the, the two family housing units, are, are those unplatted, those won't be unplatted lots? Because you can take a lot-
It would just be one lot.
It'd be one lot.
All of the houses?
It's a, it's a single house that's just split, he's gonna rent the top half of the lot, man.
No, I think you're referring to the lot, I mentioned behind it, that, that's a duplex, it'll be a single lot.
It'll be a platted lot, a single?
They're both platted.
It is platted, it's already platted.
There's two lots that Jay, that the petitioner-
You'd have to subdivide those lots in order to do a condo.
I thought you could do a, if it's a platted lot in a subdivision, the surveyor just shows the party wall that's, that goes down the, the middle, and does a survey for each side. I didn't think you had to go through all the subdivision steps, unless I'm missing something. Chris?
Chris Mattson, Planner, the property is not a platted lot, there's no subdivision out there, but it, because of the over-under in the design that Jay wants to build, you wouldn't be able to split the lots, because you would need that common wall to buildings beside each other, it's not the design that he's proposing.
Okay, okay.
Time to change it up.
That's good, yeah, so they're not platted lots, that, that answers my-
Correct, yeah, he's not proposing, that's why if you go to NC3, to allow a duplex, because they're not allowed in NC1 or 2.
Is already a house on this lot?
Yes.
And the reason it's non-conforming, I believe, is it was in the county, at some point it was annexed in, so it was, I mean, it's been there a while.
Then you want to put another house on that lot?
No, 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 I want to take that house and have it above and below duplex.
Convert the existing house into a over-under duplex.
I think that seems reasonable.
I do want to elaborate, from a zoning perspective, we can't look at ownership, whether it's owner occupied or rental, no matter how many units, federal law, would-
Good people rent houses all the time, it'll be fine, my-
I think the concern more from the neighbors, as I've spoken with everybody, is just, you know, getting some of the extra stuff moved away and, and cleaned up a little bit.
And you have plans to do that?
I do.
This is similar to one of the items that we did discuss during the joint meeting about single-family zoning, that we're looking to address in the future.
You're recommending the NC3?
NC3 is the first zone that would allow a duplex.
Recommending that?
Recommending-
That's what's being requested.
But he wants it non-conforming.
Yes.
Added to that.
NC3's in line with properties that are around it, as well, right?
Jay had rezoned the property to the west, to NC3, for a four-unit multiplex?
Uh, three, but we're down to two. We, we're not on city sewer, it's on septic system out there. So, due to the volume of what we needed for the septic, there won't only be a duplex, there won't be a triplex.
Well, how do you guys feel about the non-conforming part of it? That's what he's asking.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard for us to agree to anything that's non-conforming, coming, you know. That's where you have to say no, but we have the ability to say, it's fine. Yeah, correct.
Does that look like, what are we, what are we passing?
While making an amendment.
Letting keep all these buildings.
Yeah, but I mean, how do you, how's the ordinance read on something like that?
It would be a non-conforming structure, structures, so he wouldn't be able to make them larger, expand them, if one of them were to be demolished, for whatever reason, they would not be able to be rebuilt, or it'd have to be rebuilt to meet code.
Which I'm sure you understand. Yeah, exactly.
And we do have plans, we would have plans to reduce a little bit of the buildings, but as I mentioned in planning and zoning, it wouldn't be a significant amount, I mean, the ratio right now is totally, I totally understand the seats they're in, I absolutely do, it's just, it's a unit problem.
We wish we could have said, gone a different way too, to be honest with you, but, that's why these guys are here.
I know.
As, as a board, I, I don't, I don't think any of us on the board would want to go down the path, you know? You're talking precedent, you would have the ability, but you just don't want to set the precedent. That's, that's why it's easier for us to say, you guys paid the big buck. Yeah.
Don't do that one, I'm taking a drink.
Hey, anyone else be heard? What's the wishes of the, well, we've already got a motion. Vote on the amendment. Anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
I will. How, how do you want us to do it, Amber? Have to, to make a motion.
Make a motion to allow it to continue to non-conforming status.
Correct.
With the understanding that one of the buildings is coming down, and the additional buildings are going to be improved, I guess is.
Their option would be to just do the first reading, allow staff to craft the language and bring it back next week for the second, or appropriate language.
Yeah, that seems the most appropriate, yeah.
That seems appropriate, let's do it.
The hearing is closed.
That makes sense.
Thanks.
Ordinance vacating, that passes five, zero. Ordinance vacating Marquette Avenue, Meek Avenue, Newell Avenue, Nubra Avenue, MacArthur Street, north of Aviation Bookstore, east of Valhain's Drive, west of Harbor Drive, P&amp;Z recommends approval, first consideration June 3rd, second consideration June 10th, motion to defer this item until June 24th.
I'll second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Nineteen's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Midwest Hotels for the land in the Downer Park Urban Renewal Area, and directing the city manager to negotiate a development degree, agreement, deferred from May 6th and June 3rd, staff is requesting a motion to delete this item, I'll move that.
Second. Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Abstain conflict of interest.
Moore?
Abstain conflict of interest.
O'Kane?
Aye.
The Downtown Partners was put on incorrectly, won't be till June 24, citizen concerned, citizen be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Paul Koskovich, 2106 Third Street, and I got a few things I'd like to talk about tonight. Number one, we had an item on planning zoning last week, and the board, for the second time in a year now, on just one of our items, can't assemble enough to make a vote, it's wasting our time, especially inevitably, when it's gonna get denied, and then we're gonna come to you folks and ask for a variance on this item. When can we make some changes and get some people to the seats?
A lack of quorum, is that, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, second time, just in our projects in one year.
Can, let me, let me ask, may I ask Chris about that?
We did have a quorum, however, one of the members present was abstaining, so any, even a 100% yes vote would be 3, 0, 1, you need four votes at Board of Adjustment for approval. So we did defer the item to the next meeting, we just didn't have enough members to vote in approval of the item, we didn't feel like that was fair to the petitioner.
How many were missing from the meeting?
Three. Two that had let us know that they would be gone, and one that just didn't show.
Could we get some notice then, so I don't send Jeff over here on my dime?
We did reach out to Jeff that day, when we found out that we weren't gonna have as many members, so, yeah, there was no one in attendance at the meeting.
Okay, well, I guess I wasn't notified, and I emailed Jeff and asked where we're at on this, he said no meeting.
Until that day, we didn't know how many members we were gonna have present at the meeting.
Oh, Jeff was notified, so he didn't come down and waste time?
Correct, yep, our conversations had been with Jeff, and he'd actually let us know ahead of time that no one was gonna be there to represent the item, so that's why we wanted to make sure that they were aware, since no one was gonna be present.
Paul, should we skip Jeff and notify you directly?
Well, it's fine, regardless, the project's, the project's getting delayed more time, which, it's gonna, again, finish here, because they're gonna deny it, which is just frustrating, we have to go through this process again, on this project, and I'd already talked to a couple of you on the board about this, but we have to go through this process for, again, it's gonna get denied, just to come to, to ask you guys for approval. It's just a complete waste of time. We've got people coming from Omaha, that want to buy this piece of property, and it's, it's, it's literally a 60-day process, and it gets, again, delayed here.
Is it an appeal from the Board of Adjustment, though?
Appeal to staff interpretation of the code regarding driveway location.
And then after that, can it come to the council, or, or do you go to district court at that point?
It comes to council to acknowledge the actions, just like the other BOA item was tonight, and then it would be district court if he wishes to appeal.
We didn't have to go through that last time, you folks made it work here.
I don't believe there was an official action in front of council, there was direction to staff to make an accommodation.
Is this the driveway out there, which street?
Singing Hills.
Huh?
Hills Boulevard. One on the corner?
I do believe there was direction from the staff, but okay. I think there was direction to the staff.
It never, it never made it to the point of having to come to council, it was taken care of before it came to you.
So is this a different one, then?
So is this a different one, then?
A different, a different lot, with the same request for the driveway to have access from Singing Hills.
As it was presented and approved on a plat.
Oh, so there was two of them that were on the corners that both were approved to go out?
There were several, I think maybe more than two, approved here on our plat.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Julie.
I didn't know there were that many, that there was a bunch of them. I thought it was this one that was overlooked that went directly on to Singing Hills. So we said, okay, it's already been approved, let's, let's let them do it.
How, I asked this question the last time, obviously I don't pay it close enough attention, but how do you guys approve a plat that shows this? It's always, it was a mystery last time, it remains a mystery to me.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer, uh, these plans were incomplete when it comes to the driveway locations. There was a random three or four lots that showed their driveway locations, so none of them are on there, or the rest of them weren't on there, out of the 143.
Lot doesn't show a driveway, though.
Correct. None of the items that were submitted as part of the preliminary plat showed the driveway locations. I believe it was a paving plan as part of the engineering documents that were submitted. It was the engineering, it was a paving plan as part of the engineering documents that was submitted after the plat was approved. The plat itself does not show driveways, correct?
Plat shows the driveways, correct.
The plat did not show driveways.
Right.
It was the paving plan.
It was the paving plan.
It was part of the engineering plans.
Didn't approve that.
Approved paving, play, the paving plan, but all the driveways were not even drawn in on that plan, just a few random lots.
So you're saying that, yeah, it was approved, but it was incomplete. It didn't have all the driveways, so you wouldn't have known to catch that some of them.
The paving plan was approved.
Or, yeah, sorry, the paving plan, yeah.
Well, at what point is the driveway cuts approved? When does that come into play?
That should have been in the final plat. That should have been in the final plat, that was missed on our end. None of, none of the driveways were in.
But in the final plat, they were in?
No.
We were assigned addresses showing a map that these guys approved. I mean, I can provide you guys emails. We have, we have addresses of the parcels, and they derived, or they developed those addresses based on the driveways.
How did we come to the conclusion, I asked this last time, everywhere I drive on Singing Hills from the bank out all the way, there's driveways, lots of them back out onto Singing Hills. How did we decide here that we don't want them?
The 2015 zoning code does state for residential, when it's on a corner lot, that the access comes off of the lower classification. So in this case, the side streets are local, Singing Hills was designated as a collector's street.
All those lots that you were referring to were done prior to the 2015.
Built before the 2015 zoning said, this is now a collector's street.
And it's just saying, then if you're.
We can't aviate from that.
And if you're on a corner.
We can if we approve it.
That's part of his request.
Right, right, I get it.
So what I'm asking is, is you folks approved one kindly on to Singing Hills, then there's a middle lot that is going to have
How many are there actually, really?
driveways on Singing Hills, and then there's going to be this one, I'm asking you to.
How many are there really, that you want to put on Singing Hills?
This would be the second one.
I mean, how many total?
This would be it. Then Singing Hills is full.
So this is the second and final.
Chris, would you, would you visit with your members too about attending the meetings and making sure on the Board of Adjustment?
It was discussed during the last board meeting, the board did discuss that issue and the possibility of sending letters to certain members.
Okay. How many is that person that didn't bother to respond? How many have they missed?
We just ran those numbers, it's about 50%. I believe 25% is the cutoff.
At 25, the absence for unexcused absences, they. And they can appeal that removal till the, to the council.
I don't know. What do you guys want to do?
It's just this one last one, and if we missed it, we missed it.
There's nothing we can do right now, because there's, it's not an agenda item.
Correct.
Right, right, it's not an agenda.
When do you meet next?
Tuesday, next week.
Is it going to be denied again?
Of course. I can't say it, it's a board vote.
Let's make sure the quorum.
We always reach out to them multiple times before the meeting, so we'll continue to do that.
And then we'll just have to, yeah, either dismiss members, recruit others, whatever we need to do. But I mean, I agree, it would be frustrating for business owners or whoever, you know, to make time to come down. And I'm sure it's frustrating for staff too, to have all the planning going into something and not be able to pass. It's frustrating for everyone, but it is a big responsibility. I mean, I understand that too, so we need to find people that are serious and about that.
Currently have two vacancies, and to my knowledge, we haven't had any applicants yet.
Oh, okay, well, there you go. Need to get filled as well, then.
On planning zoning and the?
And Board of Adjustment.
And Board of Adjustment, you have two vacancies, yeah.
As of July 1st, we'll have two vacancies.
Do you have applications? Well, they're.
Let me double check and just make sure.
Yeah, and check to see if the members that are, their terms are expiring, are willing to carry, you know, carry on till.
They've both stated that they're not going to reapply.
Correct.
We better get to work on that.
No, no, there are no applications. There's no applications on. Not at this time.
Planning and zoning commission, it's a wonderful commission to serve on.
Yeah, you better get on that and get a couple of names in here.
I got, we got to get a couple of names, yeah.
The second thing I'd like to talk to, I really hope you guys don't eliminate or reduce the tax abatement you just mentioned on this prior deal. We are going to sell District 42 effective next month. We got in pre-COVID, we're at 107 a door. Right now, cost to build is probably about 150K a door. We are not making any money. We are not making money because of taxes. We have a great abatement from you guys on it. When that thing is full, abatement, it's almost a half million dollars in taxes. I mean, we talked to other contractors out of state, they don't want to come here, the taxes are outrageous. Sioux City, Iowa's a top 10 tax base in the country, property tax rate. It is not affordable. And we're meeting, we were supposed to meet last week, but got delayed to this week. We're meeting with Renee on another project. If we can't get an abatement, we will not do the project. It does not work. It does not pencil, and that's with us billing it ourselves. So please do not even.
The state is part of your problem, because they did away with the school part portion on the abatement. That's not our deal.
No, I know, but Alex just mentioned that maybe, you know, you know, I thought, the way I heard it was.
We have, we're still going to do tax rebates.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't saying doing away with it, I was saying that we need to make sure that this is what's necessary, what the market is demanding, and if it's that one, because it hasn't always been 100% for 10 years.
Oh, believe me, I know, I asked for 100% for 10 years on my tax, on my storage project, didn't get it. Didn't really need it, but.
I know, and that's what I was saying, is I just was asking E D team meeting to have that conversation and see what is necessary, what's the best path moving forward, that's all I was saying. But no, I can't imagine a world where it's going away.
Okay, good, good, we really need it.
But I, as I told another apartment developer, there is, there have been apartments developed in this community without any abatement.
Well, sure, I mean, long time ago, cost to build.
There was one built last year up on the north side, Rodmore asked for nothing.
Well, they got bigger horsepower than we do.
What's that?
They got more horsepower than we do, I mean. I'm just a little guy trying to make it work here.
I understand what you're saying, they don't cash flow, but how.
They don't, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll send you our financials tomorrow, Ben, I will.
I'm telling you, they're not building them for practice. Rodmore's a big operator, they build them to make money.
Like I said, they got big horsepower, we don't. I mean, we still got to go to the bank and put 20% down. I mean, maybe they, you know, they got a better balance sheet than us. The last thing we talked about is, there is a big double standard here for weeds.
I knew you were going to bring that up.
Oh, man, are we ever. Okay, this started last year, we got a weed complaint, fought it, got Bob involved, and honestly, got nowhere, and I tried to get it delayed, Bob was adamant, put his foot down and said absolutely not. So we got weed complaints out at Elk Creek, and it's targeted. It's targeted at my partner and I. And the double standard here is.
It's targeted because complaints that I get from your people that live there, nobody's targeting you other than the people that live there don't like living next to their weeds.
Well, they're, they have the HOA, they complain if the pool is a degree down. They would complain if there's weeds, Bob, and they don't. It's targeted because I made a nice tour around town today in the rain, because there's nothing else to do today. I mean, the city mowing crew apparently doesn't know where the riverfront is. That place is an eyesore. I bitched about it last year, I filed the complaint, nothing was done. Apparently, the mower doesn't go to the riverfront. It's an eyesore. Head down to Bridgeport, there's a sign that says Bridgeport, you can't even see it through the weeds. The weeds are this tall. Apparently, our mowing department doesn't make it down there. Let's head down to the lot on Outer Bell and Floyd. We have a nice bike trail that goes right behind Heizer Road, it's a corner lot, he bought, right, up to that bridge. We do exactly what they do, they mow 10 foot on each side of the concrete. That's what we do at Elk Creek, we do 10 foot out from the street, three passes with our mower. Apparently, that's good enough up there. You can hover your bike through all these weeds, but at Elk Creek, where we're trying to sell lots, that's not allowed. Let's head down Floyd Boulevard to whatever development's right by Pizza Ranch. All those lots you guys own, right there along Floyd, they don't see a mower. Drive on your way home, you'll see it. Right next to my storage project, I bitched about it last year, I filed the complaint, Kelly Box says we mow it once a year. Well, why is that not acceptable at Elk Creek? Why is that acceptable on marketable Sioux City properties, but it is not acceptable for the private sector? That's unacceptable. Why?
There's a big difference. One's residential and one's not. Everyone you cited is a commercial zone.
I, okay, look at my storage project, it's beautiful, I'm right next to this eyesore. That doesn't make it okay. People still frequent it. It's unacceptable that we can't be held to the same standard. And then, my partner tells him, fine, we'll buy a mower, and says, we're getting a mower from AgriVision, it won't be until X date. They said, nope, the mowing crew's coming on Friday, get it done, or we'll pay a fine. Lastly, we don't even own a piece of property, and the gal says, you guys got to get that mowed. Ben says, we don't even own it. Well, your sign's out there. Doesn't mean we own it. He, she says, she says, well, if you guys are buying it, and the owner, current owner doesn't pay the fine, then you guys got to pay it. I mean, that's a bunch of BS. It's not even true. I mean, I'll get my attorney involved. It's unacceptable, we are getting targeted. And, yes, yes, we are.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are.
No, we don't target people, we work on complaints, whether you want to believe that or not, so.
So when's the riverfront going to get cut?
You can stand off you about that all day, Paul, but we're not, to say that we're tar, we, we just, go get every piece of property Paul owns, and we're going to send somebody out there to tag it is baloney.
When's the riverfront going to get cut? When's the riverfront going to get cut? It's an eyesore, it was an eyesore last summer.
I don't disagree with you, and Julie brought it up to, to Bob already, I agree with that. It's unacceptable, I agree with that. I drove by it again today, it's unacceptable, I agree with that. I'll tell you what, we'll get a mow before you probably do. Get yours.
Maybe.
But don't say we're targeting, because that bothers me, we don't target people for that. We got enough just working on complaints.
So why, but why can this bike path lot not get the same treatment? Again, we are mowing 10 foot off the pavement and the sidewalks. It's a bare lot for sale.
It's not for sale.
Our stuff is. What's, how's that different? And we are, we have 10 foot mowing off of it.
Our lot's not for sale. You're going, the next, you're going to tell me that we got to mow the Floyd River Channel?
Yeah, it looks like hell too. In fact.
Brom grass looks like hell to you. You know, we could.
No, I'm saying where, where they, they actually spray it, they typically hire it out, and clearly, it's not working. We used to bid, but they, they don't, they always give it to the cheap guy. I mean, look at it, look at the Floyd Channel, it looks terrible.
Hey, what else?
I, I just, I don't understand why, what the difference is then from commercial lots to residential, they're both marketable.
I don't either.
I'd like an approval to get an extension till we get our mower from AgriVision.
How long would you like?
Next Friday, not this Friday.
Is that acceptable, Bob?
Were you given an extension before, or what was it?
Yeah, we've extended, we would do it again.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mr. O'Kane?
Well, this Thursday is the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Dedication. I wanted to call out park staff. That was a pretty amazing event, it was really, really neat seeing the, the Combe Park Mountain Bike Park, I got to make sure I get the name right. We, we had some family in town, it was really cool seeing some of those kids do a lot of the tricks on, on that equipment. That was, that was pretty exciting. I unfortunately was not able to attend the, the next night with the food trucks and the party, and I heard there was a really good turnout, though, so hopefully some of you made it there. This week, the, the Riverfront Dedication, I was talking with Matt about it, and, and he said, you know, this is Parks Month. We just got dedication after dedication, so that's pretty exciting to see. It's nice spending some time in green spaces when the weather's nice, and hopefully, hopefully the rain won't be too much of a hindrance this time around. That's everything that I've got for this week.
Julie?
I don't have a lot, but I know we're closing the book on the mowing. However, at the riverfront, there is some rough-looking.
More than some, that's terrible.
Yes, there is some, but part of that is intentionally sowed, planted, sown to like Big Blue Stem, et cetera. So I think it looks really rough, and yeah, it's gotten some weeds in it, and I brought that to Bob's attention already. Yes, we can grow natural grasses, and like you said, brom gets tall and it's green, and this is some, I think this is Big Blue Stem, if I'm not mistaken, but that's why it looks rough, it's not made to, grown to be mowed. So we got to get some weed control, put some herbicide on it, whatever, to control the thistles that are out there. But I don't know if it's going to get mowed, we'll have to see what Park says about.
In case then, we shouldn't let the thistles, because.
Correct, I agree, correct. There's some leafy spurge, and there's some thistles in there, and we do need to do weed control. In fact, I went as far, my husband's a private pesticide applicator, and he has his license, and I said, what can we use to keep the grass and get rid of the weeds? So I do have a recommendation. Okay, weeds done. June Jam is going on this weekend downtown, so it's going to be a huge festival, streets are going to be closed, there's going to be lots of food, lots of entertainment, music, karaoke, all kinds of things going on, so please come downtown. And construction is starting on Hamilton Boulevard, there's some stop and go and single lane, and if you can go another route, I would recommend that you do so, because as traffic gets heavy in the morning and in the evening, it gets kind of backed up, so if you can go around, just want to give you a heads up, let's do that. And consider the vacancies on some of our boards. We just heard that P and Z is going to have some vacancies. I'm sure there are others. Check our government page out and see what's available. Got to help.
Yeah, I feel like I have quite a few different things, so I'll try to get through them. I want to go off of a little bit of what Matthew was saying, that I made it to the ribbon cutting, obviously, and I, I think that was a great time. It really was wonderful to have Debbie Durham in town to be able to, on behalf of the IEDA, and talk a little bit about that. I really appreciated her making that trip, but also all of the different donors and things like that, that were able to be there and be recognized. I really appreciated, Dan took in the notes the opportunity to share a lot of those names and organizations that were a part of that, because it's, it's really incredible. I went down the next day on Saturday to Trail Fest, I was a little worried about weather, and just really was extraordinarily impressed with what our staff was able to do, staff, volunteers, but also a number of other individuals. We had so many different sponsors that were there. I think they gave, gave away dozens of bikes, and there were so many people that were excited about that. But just, yeah, I mean, Chesterman's went above and beyond, they had a ton of product that was available for free for people to enjoy. I talked to multiple people that were coming from across multiple states just to be able to experience the park that we had. It really was something to behold, and I'm excited for the drone footage, I'm excited for the conversations and just the growth. I want to especially give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation staff. I know that they are going above and beyond to do everything they can. I also recognize that they are down staff members. They are doing a lot to try to keep up with all of the parks and all of the rain, just like all of you are. And when you have all these ribbon cuttings and food truck Fridays in different parks, and next it will be Grand View with Saturday in the park, and yeah, when you don't have staff members and when you have a limited budget and you're trying to limit the number of staff that you can hire, or if people aren't applying, I think that there are challenges presented there for sure. that you can hire, or if people aren't applying, I think that there are challenges presented there for sure. But Trail Fest was incredible, and Angel and Angel Wallace, Matt Salvatore, John Burns, Rachel Eskins, I mean, the list goes on. Kelly Bach, Brett Prince, all of those individuals did extraordinary work, and they should all be very proud. Yeah, 58 different parks.
Fifty-eight parks.
People are trying to keep up with. Um, so that was amazing. Just huge shout out, and if you haven't checked it out, please make sure to do so. The bike rentals, the magic carpet taking you up the hill, it was all very impressive and well done. The next I wanted to point out was I was able then to bounce up to Hubbard Park after that for the Legends game, and that's another, another thing that really is, is I think moving to go up there. I think it's, it was kind of a cool dichotomy of, I went to the brand new, where it was like, gosh, this is something new and exciting, and not a lot of people, you know, have experienced this yet. But then to go to Hubbard Park and have almost that sense of nostalgia of how it was a WPA project and the Legends and, you know, the, the, what was it called? The Sioux City Ghosts, Mayor. I mean, just going through that, it was really, it was really cool, and it made me think of, uh, my friend Delbert Christiansen. Um, and when he moved back to town, that was kind of his mission, was to really improve that park and get, get people going on it, and he would jump into my office all the time and talk to me about it and was so excited. And I know there are a number of people that made that possible, so I really appreciate them doing that, and I appreciate the people that were able to come up there and enjoy that game and support what they're doing up there, and the people that organized it, whether it's Jessica Jones Sitzman or all of the others that are involved. I just really appreciate that. The one thing that I will say in regards to the park is, I do think we need to look a little bit to accessibility, if possible at all. I really appreciated that there was the ramp getting up to the concessions and different things, but even the, the grade of the ramp getting on the sidewalk was pretty, pretty severe. So we might need to address or look at that. Um, the next thing I wanted to bring up was, it was actually a, uh, we are closing the fiscal year and got the numbers, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Explore Souland, our C V B organization. I think a lot of work has been done to secure more conferences, more events, more things happening, whether it's sports, athletic related or otherwise. Um, and there was actually, it was a record year for hotel motel tax in the city of Sioux City. Uh, it has never, never been this high as far as the, the tax that was collected for that, um, which means a lot, a lot of heads in beds. Um, and a lot of people are frequently visiting our community, coming here for a range of different events, and it was encouraging to see that, that number, um, continue to increase and continue to grow. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, I actually received a call from a security officer from Leaf Erickson Pool. Uh, if you didn't know, we had, um, some officers that were out there, um, just kinda monitoring the situation and making sure that everything was, was going smoothly and well. And, um, he said that he was beyond impressed with our lifeguarding staff. He said that on one Sunday alone, he watched them save five people that were unable to swim and were going under. And he just said that the way that those young people, you know, and he, I don't know their ages, and he didn't either, you know, whether they're 17, 18, however old these lifeguards are, to take their job seriously and to go in, save those individuals and get them back up, or, you know, to an area where they are safe to swim. He was very impressed, and I, I thanked him not only for his willingness, um, to serve in that capacity down there as some security, which I, which he made the comment that a lot of people came up to him and thanked him for doing so, because it made them feel very safe to drop off their kids um, or be there with their grandkids or what have you. So I thanked not only him, but I wanted to make sure to recognize those lifeguards, um, not just at Leaf Erickson, but really at all of our pools that are taking the job seriously and our staff that it takes to train and recruit them, so thank you very much for that. We really appreciate the service that you did to our city. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Dan?
Um, just a few things, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor, for reading the proclamation on Juneteenth Day. We wanna send a message to the community that we're very supportive and continue to be supportive. Secondly, Flag Day was a beautiful celebration we could all be proud of on Friday, all the flags that were flying. Uh, it was just remarkable, um, how nice Flag Day was on Friday. I hope everyone had a good Father's Day celebration yesterday. Uh, I sure did, and it was followed up with the Banshell Concert at Grandview Park. And our municipal band, I'll tell you, they just do a terrific job, variety of music, and there was really a lot of good attendance at that concert. So that's on Sunday evenings at, starting at 7:30, and they typically run about an hour, a little over an hour. And Larry Wentz was the, was the emcee last night, and he did a good job. He, he threw in a lot of zingers, which were, which were good. Kept everybody on their toes, so. The other thing I wanna, uh, bring up, which is extremely important to me, and I think it's important to the city, is on Friday, we had a press conference and we discussed fireworks. And, um, I want to compliment and thank Sergeant Tom Gill, who did a terrific job of presentation to the citizens and residents of Sioux City of what we need to do um, to be successful this go around as we approach the Fourth of July celebration. And Deputy Fire Marshal Ryan Collins, representing the Fire Department, also did an excellent job of presenting, and it was just really a good presentation. So probably from here on out, for each council mem, council meeting, I'm going to remind everyone legally, uh, if you're 18 or older, uh, you can discharge fireworks on Wednesday, July 3rd, from 1 o'clock PM to 11 o'clock PM. And on July 4th, Thursday, uh, July 4th, Thursday, from 1 o'clock PM to 11 o'clock PM. I wanna encourage everyone to please respect your neighbors. Try to, uh, don't discharge fireworks before then. Do your best to hold off till July 3rd, uh, because that's what the law is. That's what our ordinance reads. And, uh, we, we just have to, you know, we've made progress over the past several years. I think we've made good progress, but we can still do better. And we need to do better, and we must do better. So, uh, just remember that those are the two days, two times you can, you can discharge fireworks. The other thing we have going for us, it's just remarkable, all that we have going for us, they're display, professional displays of fireworks that are put on by the Sioux, uh, Sioux City Explorers. At their ball games, there's, uh, the Saturday in the park. Uh, they will have fireworks after Saturday in the park on July 6th. And the professional displays are really the safest, in my opinion. We sure don't wanna have any injuries. Public safety is first and foremost when it comes to fireworks and celebrating the Fourth of July. So it's very important to me that we not have injuries, and we have public safety, and that we show respect to all of our, uh, neighbors across the city. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
First thing is, the annual League of Cities Conference is in Sioux City, and I can only tell you how embarrassing, embarrassing it will be if we're not well represented there. We complain that we have to go to the other side of the state, so I hope you guys can clear your schedule.
What's that date?
September.
Eighteenth through the 20th, September. Eighteenth through this 20th, so. Let Gabby know so you can.
Okay.
Get your reservations in. Uh, the Hubbard Park, I had to leave early, but, uh, I just wanna thank, uh, well, everybody involved, but in particular, if you weren't there, it was, it was a neat deal, and Alex alluded to it, but they did a rendition of what the Sioux City Ghosts used to do. If you don't know anything about the Sioux City Ghosts, they're in the, they're, they are in the Smithsonian, because they were a, they were a black traveling softball team that traveled all over, never made any money. They did.
Men's team?
Huh?
Men's?
Men, and they traveled all over, but they do it, they did a routine where they didn't play with a ball. They just pretended like they were hitting and fielding and throwing people out, and it was a, it was really neat to see that. But I would encourage you to do a little history lesson on them. Fuji Fulton and some of those guys, they, they were the, they were the, uh, barnstormers back in the day, and they were really, they were the, they were the Harlem Globetrotters of softball. They are that famous, and there are other areas, unfortunately, not so much in our own community, but all of them were from here. Lastly, this not, I could just talk to Bob, but in our Cityscape magazine, if you look, Bob, iPad is paying, is paying like 5% daily balance, on your daily balance, so you can transfer in and out. I would certainly hope that our finance department is looking at that. It's a great investment tool, and you can get your money in and out of it daily. And they're paying, on May 13th, they were paying 5% on all the money you had in there. And you can take it in and out just like you can with a bank.
And what is that? I missed the first.
Well, it's the Iowa League of Cities has an investment fund.
Oh, yeah.
So they invest your money, and you can get in and out of it at any.
Just like a group plan type thing?
And as I reminded Amber, the councils didn't always wanna get to use them for work comp, but we've been saving quite a bit of money once we got rid of that. We don't have to administer it ourselves anymore, so what they do do, they, the league does very well, and it's something we should consider, is all I'm saying. I move we adjourn. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.